Well, seeing a presence of a quorum of the Amherst School Committee, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock on the dot on May 26. Our first order, item on the agenda is to approve our minutes from May 19. Oh, before we go in, roll call vote, and then also acknowledge that we are being recorded and livestreamed on Amherst Media. Thank you very much, Amherst Media, on Channel 15 in Amherst. So we'll call it-
I'm just gonna be starting in just a few minutes. I just want to give time on another two minutes to get more people on the line. I know that we had 94 who registered for this.
Is that- Okay, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you.
Present.
Ms. Spitzer. Present. Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
And McDonald, present. And we also have Dr. Morris on the line and Amherst Media. So moving on back to approving minutes of May 19. Did anybody have any comments or edits that we can pass on to CIO? Seeing none. Mr. Harrington, did you want to say something? I can't tell. No, okay. Mr. Demling.
I move to approve the minutes of May 19, 2020.
Moved by Demling. I'll second that. Seconded by McDonald. Any further discussion? No, seeing none. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Passes- oh, McDonald, aye. So the minutes are approved, 5-0. And now we'll move on to public comment. And as a reminder, a public comment may be submitted either in written form, audio, or visual file to email, my email address, mcdonaldA@arps.org, or by leaving a voice message on our Google Voice number. And we will play the recording or show the message. And we do have one comment that came in on our phone number. And so I will play that now.
This is Tony Cunningham in Amherst, and this message is for the Amherst School Committee, the elementary district. I wanted to second what Carrie Spitzer proposed at the last Regional School Committee meeting, namely that repairs to ventilation systems in the schools be prioritized for capital funding. As Carrie mentioned, much of the recent writing on limiting COVID transmission indoors has referenced proper ventilation. But I feel strongly that any work needed to keep air flowing in classrooms and ensuring windows can open and have screens attached should be high priority. Therefore, I would urge you to ensure the funding for HVAC equipment replacement at Crocker Farm and the other schools be included, and for the school committee representatives on JCPC to push for this. Many thanks.
Okay. And as mentioned, that was the only comment that we received today. So we'll move on to new and continuing business. And our first item is the budget vote for fiscal year 21.
First, so I'll start and turn to Dr. Slaughter. You're not going to see a lot of change from what was proposed previously. I think the only thing you'll see is that there was originally some funds that were planned to be designated to Special Ed Stabilization Account, or Special Ed Stable Account for the Amherst Elementary Schools District is in pretty good shape. So we're building in, the more we learn about next fall, the more we realize having some contingencies with place is going to be important. So it'll allow us to have a little more wiggle with additional costs that are certainly sure to come as we head towards fall. Other than that, there are no changes to the budget as proposed for the operational budget, which is the only vote that's up, the only budget vote that we're asking for tonight. I don't know if Dr. Slaughter has any more that you'd like to add? And there is a motion. Let me see if I can pull that up. It's quite simply, I can display it on the screen if that'd be, if you'd prefer, Ms. McDonald.
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Lord, did you have a question?
Oh, I could make the mo- I could move, I can make the motion if you want.
Okay.
Okay. I move to adopt a budget of $23,912,452 for fiscal year 2021 for the Amherst Elementary Schools.
Moved by Lord. There's second.
Second.
Moved by Lord and seconded by Harrington. Are there, is there further discussion, quest, comments? Mr. Demling.
So slightly off topic now that we're within the motion of the operational budget, but can you explain why we're not seeing a capital proposal tonight? Where we saw one last week.
So I can jump in and, actually, could I pause for another topic? I think Mr. Manino is, I guess, here for the region meeting, which will start at 6:30, and there's an Amherst meeting at the same length that's happening beforehand.
Yes, I noticed that you-
So I think if you came back to the same link in 15 minutes, I think you'll be all set. We can't hear you because you're muted, Mr. Manino.
I will leave. I just joined early because the last time I couldn't get in. I'll try again.
See you soon.
So is it okay to answer the question now, or are we-
Yes.
To the chair, or would you prefer I wait till after the operational-
Oh. Yeah, let's, let's actually see if there's any other comments from the committee on the operational budget, and then we'll come back to that. No further discussion? Mr. Demling.
So can you explain again, I think you mentioned this at another school committee meeting that we all sit on, that there's a slight difference in one of the budgets being slightly above level funded and the other one being slightly below, and that it works out in the wash, and it's due to a way that charter school reimbursements are accounted for with the town. Could you just re- clarify slash state that? Thanks.
Dr. Slaughter, you like me to do that, or would you like to jump in? I'm fine either way.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So to make a rather long and fiscally complex story short, the Amherst municipal budget takes on the charter school cost, and then the Amherst Elementary District reimburses the town for that cost. And this year, because we had a decline in charter school students, we actually had a 3% or 0.03 increase to our budgets. Originally, the budget guidance was 2.5% increase, and ours was 2.8. And that was due to the lower-than-anticipated charter enrollment last year. So where we landed with the town is because of multiple factors, including another educational budget that the town has to support. The town has worked with us so that the Amherst Elementary School budget is slightly above level funded. And I can say, the regional budget is slightly below the way the assessments work out. In the end, it works out very essentially to be a wash from the town's perspective, but it's a really helpful difference for the Amherst Elementary Schools to be slightly above level funded. I get that right, Doug? Okay.
Mr. Demling, did you have another?
No, I was just saying thank you.
Is there any further discussion in the motion? Okay, seeing none. The motion has been moved and seconded, so we'll roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
McDonald, aye. So the motion on the budget passes 5 to 0. So we can circle back to the question on the table about the capital budget.
Sure. So in the capital budget, the way the process works is the staff here propose a capital budget, and then it goes through the school committee representatives and the Joint Capital Planning Committee to talk about that with the other town departments, library, fire, police, to be involved in that. So if there is a discussion or report that a committee member wants to make based on conversations at JCPC, we certainly, and it fits within the topic of FY21 budget, to have that conversation. But as opposed to at the regional level where the committee actually votes on a budget, the Amherst Elementary District does not vote on a capital budget. Its representatives bring the proposed capital budget to JCPC, and the attempt is for agreements to get hammered out with that group for how the town will spend whatever capital allotment there is. So, you know, I think for today's conversation, if there is a discussion or feedback that JCPC representatives want to have, we certainly can do that. But it's not something that's typically voted by school committee members. But that all being said, neither Dr. Slaughter nor I are opposed to that conversation.
Ms. Spitzer.
Yeah, so both Peter and I were at the JCPC meeting, and I, for one, would love to, not love, but I think it's necessary to have a conversation about that meeting. And I'd like to bring everybody up to speed on how the JCPC meeting went, with the acknowledgement that it was, so the meeting occurred last Wednesday, and based on the feedback from that meeting, there will be another meeting tomorrow night. And I believe it's starting at 7:15. It might be 7:30. I need to double check. But, so I'm gonna, I'll give a quick update, and then I have a feeling Peter will probably want to jump in. So I, we went into the meeting, and obviously, because of everything happening economically, not only in our community, but more broadly, I know that we've all been instructed to kind of cut our capital budgets as much as possible. And so the town's initial proposal that was shared with us at this meeting, and this was not at all final, it was, they were seeking our feedback, and I think they hopefully heard our feedback, but what they did is they essentially kept sidewalks and, you know, potholes and Department of Public Works items flat, and then created another fund for all of the other capital projects potentially in the town. And that was put at about $300,000. So as a representative of the school, we were, I think both Peter and I were quite concerned about this proposal, just knowing that in order for our schools to be safe for our kids next year, we're definitely going to need to make sure we continue to invest. And so one caveat here is that there is some federal funding through the CARES Act that will be available for anything that we can say, I shouldn't say anything, but for items that are related to COVID-19. So potentially, things like hand sanitizer or building plexiglass separations where needed, things like that. So in some regards, that's, that's positive, that it's not an unlimited pool of funds. So I do have some concern that we may need to even invest more than what might be coming down the pipeline through these grants. But I'm particularly concerned about, you know, some of the items that we need to invest in in our schools to keep them, because our buildings are so old, and because we need to make sure those buildings are in, you know, in the best condition we possibly can, I feel really uncomfortable not doing some of the basic capital investments that I think, I think we've identified as important. And what we discussed wasn't reflected in the capital budget in any way other than this $300,000 fund that was going to be spread across all of the other agencies and departments in the town. So that was concerning to me. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll hear an update that has balanced out, I think, the priorities of the town so that schools and things like the fire department and police are also included. But I wanted to, and I'll let Peter add to that.
And Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so that's a very good summary. And yeah, I think Ms. Spitzer already mentioned this, but it was, it was the initial proposal from the town manager and the finance director, who's been on board for eight days. So, so they were taking feedback. And this, and I think the concern that Ms. Spitzer expressed was, it was universal on the, on the part of all the members of JCPC. The other couple of logistic things that were concerning is that the, that additional resource fund of 300-something thousand was originally envisioned as, as things come up over the course of the fiscal year that are COVID-related, the schools and other departments would come and then ask for that money. Whereas we already know that we have must-haves that we absolutely need to do now. And we also know that some of these items, if we don't do them now, aren't going to get done. Like, for example, if we, if we want to spend anything to shore up the Fort River roof, that's not something we can do in the middle of the school year. And I mean, I'm just, so just going down on the, you know, we had that $220,000 capital proposal last week of those four different items. And so what Ms. Spitzer and I were expressing, and others were expressing for their own departments, is if this really is an absolute must-have related to, you know, safety or security, COVID, and you have to invest in it now, we need to know. So that's why I think in our summary email, it's shown that Chair JCPC said that the town was going to go back to department officials, so it was going to follow up with school officials about, okay, what are your priority items that you need to know? So that we can take those four originally proposed items and, and also talk about other feedback, you know, because there's been other conversations about the Fort River roof. We just heard a public comment about the Crocker Farm HVAC. And we real, for me personally, I feel like I, in order to make an informed recommendation to the town council, I feel like I need a conversation of this group. By this group, I mean the school committee and Dr. Slaughter, Dr. Morris, maybe Mr. Roy Clark, about what is now that, that hone down, we know we have to have it before we go to the slush fund list. And the further complications that this JCPC meeting is happening 24 hours from now, and, and our JCPC's charge is to complete its work before June 1st. So, you know, we're trying not, we're trying to work with the process, but I got the sense that even after tomorrow night, it wouldn't be out of place for a department like the schools to, or the school committee to express, okay, we understand this is the plan. That being said, we have A, B, and C that at a bare minimum, we feel like we need to fund for this fiscal year. So that's where we sort of left it.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Mr. Bauchman a minute. I think the hard thing for us, and I'll talk about this more next week when we meet, is that we're going to figure out what school's going to look like. It's not like what it's used to look like. Just go figure out how we're going to use our buildings. There are some known costs that, again, I'm not going to get to put the cart in front of the horse, but I talked to Mr. Bauchman about literally this, this afternoon, that we're going to need to do, that we, they're not on our capital list because our capitalist wasn't making an assumption that there was going to be a pandemic as we built it in. And so we are, and we've received no guidance from, we received CDC guidance a week ago, and no guidance from DESI. So the number of variables is right, and I agree with Mr. Demling's point that we can put forward what we think, but in terms of the evolving nature of how to open school, we're not going to have answers to that by next Monday or Tuesday, whatever the first is. It's not going to happen. And so I expressed that to Mr. Bauchman, and I think he's understanding. And I think the committee and the community will understand that we haven't received all the guidance we would need to make accurate decisions about capital needs for next year. There are some things we know we're going to have to do. You mentioned a couple. But even how we're going to do them, you know, that's going to be an evolving process. And there's some larger items than the ones you mentioned that we're going to have to do as well. So I felt reassured in my conversation. This is not to suggest that Ms. Spitzer, Mr. Demling, or the committee shouldn't advocate for things on the capital list, but I do think, I've been with Dr. Slaughter, Mr. Roy Clark, itemizing some things that are not so small-ticket items that we're going to need to have in place by fall if we expect students to return in the fall. I don't know how to, if that's helpful or not, but it is, I did want to express to the committee that I think town staff know that this is an evolving situation. Everyone's committed on the town that I've heard to making sure students return. And there's some acknowledgement that we're not going to have all the answers in five days. We haven't received the guidance we would need to even begin to have that, that level of confidence in exactly what needs to be done. But you're right, there are some things that we know are going to need to be done, and we receive some assurance about that.
Ms. Spitzer.
Yeah, and I think this will be telling tomorrow is that, I mean, the fact that 300,000 was the entire amount for the, for the full town was what was primarily most concerning. It's not a question of whether or not the town's dedicated to helping the schools and making sure that they can open, but I think the scale was concerning. It felt, it felt quite unbalanced. So hopefully, we'll get some good news that we can report back next week in terms of shifting kind of in the scales between our roads and sidewalks, which I believe are incredibly important, but I also believe in all the other items on the capital plan are also valued.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, and I want to support Ms. Spitzer's point in that all of our, I mean, I'll just be blunt, 95% of our attention from a capital side will be, what are the things we need to do to open schools next year? And so it becomes easy to forget the maintenance things, that if we don't do them two years from now, they become larger problems, or six months from now, if we've forgotten of them, about them, they become larger problems. So nothing I was saying was trying to disagree with Mr. Demling or yourself. I was really talking about the more, the additional cost they're going to, that the schools are going to have to bear, given CDC guidance, which, again, I'll get much more detail about next week. And I don't want to start previewing parts of that because it's not ready to go, and I don't think that's wise. But I do think it's important that that's not all we do, because our buildings are old and having nothing to do with COVID-19, they're still in need of repair. And we'll pay a larger price down the road if we're not taking care of the maintenance things along the way. I think we've seen that, frankly, in our schools.
Yeah. This is all great conversation. I don't want to close it, but because we know we have another meeting next week, wondering if we can sort of wrap this up so that we can keep moving and be done in time for another meeting that's happening in the same room? Is, are folks okay with moving on? Okay. So our next item is our, the superintendent evaluation timeline approval. So Carrie, we haven't connected, but would you, are you interested in teeing this up for the committee?
Sure. So I think I've been previewing this in our last meeting. So I have been in touch with Sasha to hopefully get the instrument ready soon. We need to have a vote in order to postpone the evaluation past June 1st, is my understanding. I don't, I wasn't going to make a motion for a specific date unless, can we, do you have-
Yeah.
Could you bring up the, we don't have the agenda here.
We have, we originally have proposed June 16th, our June 16th meeting for artifacts, and June 18th for the evaluation submission from, so all of us to have completed the evaluation, and with a vote on June 30. I might propose that we push out the artifacts presentation a little bit further, but potentially to the June 30th meeting. Dr. Morris.
I mean, certainly, this is the committee's will, but my recommendation for consideration anyway is if you're going to take a vote tonight, and I agree with Ms. Spitzer that I think that's wise, not tying it to a specific date tonight, giving Ms. Spitzer more time to work with Ms. Figaroa on the tool and let that drive the process. I do also have a feeling that after next week's meeting, the conversation is going to be about fall, going to consume a lot of our time, energy, and focus. So I'm open, as I said before, I'm open to what the committee wants, but I do think maybe a more general vote and to be reconsidered once Ms. Spitzer has more time and, and the committee can, can think a little bit more about it, might be warranted, or wise.
And Mr. Demling.
I move to postpone the completion of the superintendent evaluation until a later date to be determined.
Moved by Demling. I'll second that. Seconded by McDonald. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Dr. Morris, are you amenable to that proposal? Yeah. Okay. Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Thank you. We had a warrants report on the agenda, and I don't believe we have, or I have any to report because I don't believe that I've signed any since the last meeting. So, and we just talked about agenda planning. We have a meeting TBD the week of, next week, tentatively June 3rd is what we have. That miraculously just showed up in the document. And then our meeting on, and that, the focus of that will be fall 2020 planning. And then June 16th, we have our COVID-19 school update. School Building Committee Representative, I'm guessing that's a discussion, or, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so it's, at that point, there'll need to be an appointment of a school committee member. And so it's required on the committee, on the, to be on the School Building Committee, and it can be appointed by the chair, or it could be vote. But, you know, by June, by July 1st, there needs, the committee needs to be formed. So the town manager asked me to add that to an agenda so that he has who from the school committee will be on the building committee ahead of time.
Okay. Any further discussion on agendas, meetings? Okay. Ms. Spitzer, do you want to make a motion?
I do. I move to adjourn.
Lord, second.
Moved by Spitzer and seconded by Lord. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Okay. So seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling this meeting of the Regional School Committee to order at 6:41 PM, and we are now all here. So I will call a roll call. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye. I mean, Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
Mr. Manino.
Manino, present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, present.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, present.
And Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, present.
And McDonald, present. I believe that is all of us, right? Yes. And we also have Emily Gribko here, our student representative. Welcome. And also joining us is Dr. Slaughter and Dr. Morris. And we are being livestreamed. Thank you to Amherst Media on Channel 15. And we are being recorded, and it will be available on Amherst Media afterward. So our first order tonight is to approve our minutes from May 14. Did anyone have any, I'll give a moment just to really refresh and review quickly, but if anybody has any comments, just raise your hand.
There was a place near the end where I think it said, "Mr. Seeger." I'm trying to find the, yes, under number seven, "Accept Gifts."
Oh, yeah.
"Ms. Seeger."
Ms. Spitzer, you had a comment?
So on section E where it reads, "Approve Warrants," it just, it seems like there's- So on section E where it reads approve warrants, it just, it seems like there's some words missing, it says these warrants have been approved, and we are from Ms. Spitzer, about what was approved, I think it must be like, we heard from Ms. Spitzer?
Yep. Ms. Seeger?
On the, under section A about the FY21 budget presentation and hearing, at the end of the page in the paragraph, the last paragraph, about six lines down, it says Ms. Seeger said that coming, that this coming year Leverett is increasing their budget, and therefore the 40K range is. I believe what, what happened there is I asked Dr. Morris or Dr. Slaughter what the difference was for Leverett, so it was a question.
Got it, okay. Any further edits? Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2020.
Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, no, in section A, it's like real small, but, uh, one, two, three, four, after the, at the end of the-
Moved by Demling, seconded by Harrington, is there any further discussion? Mr. Harrington?
There you go. There's a hyphen in Rory, it should be Mr. Roy Clark, not Mr. Roy Clark.
I would accept a friendly amendment to have it be moved as amended by Mr. Harrington.
Motion is amended and seconded? Okay, roll call vote on the amended motion. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser aye.
And Ms. Seeger?
Seeger aye.
And McDonald aye. And so the motion carries nine to zero. And now we move on to public comment, and we do have one public comment that came in over the phone, so I will play that.
Tony Cunningham, Amherst, I wanted to second what Kerry Spitzer said at their last regional school committee meeting, namely that repairs to ventilation systems in the schools should be prioritized for capital spending. As Kerry mentioned, much of the recent writing on limiting COVID transmission indoors has referenced proper ventilation, and so I feel strongly that any work needed to keep air flowing in classrooms and ensuring windows can open and have screens attached should be high priority. Therefore, I would urge you to ensure the funding for the high school exhaust fund and applicable HVAC work on Summit Academy and PIP be included, and for the school committee representatives on JCPC to push for this. Thank you.
That is the lone public comment that we received today, and just as a reminder for the public, we accept public comment via email, and that may be email or an audio or video recording, and by phone, phone voice message at the number that is listed on our, on our agendas. So long as they, we receive them by 3:00 PM, we will either display or play them back. Are there any committee announcements? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I just wanted to give another plug again for Amherst Education Foundation and their fundraising efforts. As mentioned before, I, you know, they're not gonna be able to do their spring gala, and so one of their big fundraising pushes is the Stars in Our Schools, where you can make a donation in the, in honor of, or in the name of a teacher, and it really has a nice impact on, on the staff. I just want to read a brief part of the quote that they have shared from Anne White, a music teacher from Fort Irer, who says, "I've had the good fortune to be honored by parents and members of the Amherst community through the Stars in Our Schools donations to AEF. When making their donations, parents and relatives have commented specifically that they see their children singing with joy and self-confidence, and that they have an appreciation for music of different world cultures. It's deeply satisfying to know that what we do in the schools gets carried out into the community." I just thought it was really nice that, you know, we could, is an opportunity not only to support an organization that supports our schools, but to have that human connection, which is obviously a lot harder to come by, you know, during this time, so just another plug for all the great work that AEF does for us.
Thank you. And Mr. Demling? Oh, sorry, Mr. Harrington. Thank you, Mr. Demling, and now Mr. Harrington.
Right, I, I just kind of wanted to, I didn't mean for it to flow like this, but I kind of wanted to recognize the passing of AEF board member and, and Amherst educators, Susan Kennedy Marks, I just figured we should acknowledge that publicly.
Oh, my God. Yeah, and I think, I'll just say, I have a lot more to share about that at the next meeting, and more acknowledgement, once I have more permission to speak on the topic. But I appreciate Mr. Harrington bringing it up, and I think when we get to our meeting next week, it'll be a joint meeting, and I think at that point, I'll likely be able to comment more openly about that.
Mr. Manino?
When did Susan pass?
So again, I'm gonna ask, just because out of respect for the family, that we not go into more details than what Mr. Harrington shared, reasonable question, well-loved person in our community, did tremendous work, and again, I think by next week, I'll be able to say what I'd like to say now, but I'm trying to respect the process and grieving folks. So if people could hold on that, we'll get together next week, and someone I knew quite well, and I'd like to share more information at that point.
Any other announcements? Moving on, actually before, I'm not sure if this is the right spot, but we do want to make a slight agenda change to move things around, because one member needs to leave, has a, has a conflict later on, so we are going to, with, with the committee's permission, move the budget, FY21 budget vote and assessment method vote to be number one on our new and continuing business item, and the item F, the bus contract vote, will be second, and then we'll continue back, go back to the COVID-19 school update and continue through the rest of the agenda in order. Is, is everybody, does that work for everybody? I'm seeing nodding heads, wonderful, thank you. Okay, so, Dr. Morris?
I'll be very brief, especially given that, for the update, so just really two things I'd like to share, one is just an appreciation for Amherst Media, they're helping out this week with the high school graduation, and they're gonna be out there on a very hot day for a long period of time, filming lots of different things, students, families, speeches by Ms. McDonald, on behalf of the school committee, and a number of others in indoor space, so I just really want to thank Amherst Media, we thought about how to honor and recognize the graduates, and got their feedback, it was critical, and all these, in all these situations, everything's happening faster than anyone can keep up with it, and we really appreciate Amherst Media's support and professionalism in jumping in, so I want to publicly acknowledge that. The only other update that's not related to something on the agenda is that we'll have a decision on middle school principal, the result of the middle school principal search later this week, but I really do want to take the time to acknowledge and thank Dr. Joseph Smith and Ms. Rebecca Sweetman for jumping in to two-year interim roles, and really transitioning the school, and all their hard work, dedication, and problem solving to move the school forward is greatly appreciated, and they will, just wanted to say that publicly as we start transitioning to thinking about fall, in particular, we'll start that next week, I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and not acknowledge the work that Dr. Smith and Ms. Sweetman did over the last two years at the middle school. And that's my update for tonight.
Thank you. And so moving on, chairs update, I don't have anything more to update at this point, so we'll move on to our budget and operation capital and assessment method vote. Turn it back over to you.
Sure, and so you won't see tremendous differences from the last budget, the only difference was, that you'll see, is in the last budget, we did have some funds going to Special Ed Stabilization Fund, and we pulled those out and put them in to increase the amount of state revenue loss we're anticipating, based on the longer it goes, the less confidence there is right now in a federal relief package that would support states. I want to be really honest that, you know, we're budgeting as best we can based on what our local legislators are telling us, and we don't really know what the future holds. One of my colleagues in Pittsfield came out and talked about what would be the impact if there was a 10% or 15% reduction in chapter 70 and state aid. We very easily would be back at this table with more significant other things to talk about, but I know the towns have requested to have this information as soon as possible to plan for town meetings and town council in Amherst, and we're making our best guess on what this will look like, but the reality is, the legislators aren't giving us much information, so you could see that in the budget that's being recommended, we have close to $300,000 in reductions of state aid, at a 10% number, that number more or less triples, it's in that vicinity, and we're having different conversations, so we've heard different things from different legislators, to be very candid with you, and I think that's because it's an evolving situation, it's not because they're disagreeing, it's just hard to track, especially as they're not meeting live and in person. So this is what we think we can propose at a level, level funded budget, which is what requested by the towns. You know, I think we, we're recommending that we stay with the 45% method, that's why there's not another vote on that, you already voted that in March, and we would anticipate, that's our recommendation, is we stay at that, but particularly at the regional level, as opposed to municipal budgets, when there's a cut of state aid, it doesn't go through an intermediary, it goes directly to the district, and I think the other caveat I want to offer is because we won't have an approved budget by all four towns by June 1st, later this week, Dr. Slaughter will be submitting an acknowledgement to DESI, because they are mandating that any district without an approved budget by each of the towns has to get, let DESI know, so they can get ready to apply a 1/12 budget if needed. We're hoping that all the towns will support this budget, I think it's, it's, it's a tough budget for us to pass, especially given the number of unknowns we had as we head into next year, I think it's a reasonable budget, if there really are catastrophic changes to what we were hearing from legislators about cuts, we'll have to come back, but I do think it's, you know, as fiscal responsible as we can be, given the number of unknowns we have to come, but I think just the, the one change is reduction of Special Ed Stabilization Fund donation, not donation, but that, that what we planned for, put that into anticipated state revenue losses, wouldn't inform you about the June 1st deadline from DESI, we will have to submit that later this week, and just really the uncertainty in the state budget, and how at the regional level, as opposed to municipal budget, it directly affects the finances of the district. So those were the three updates, Dr. Slaughter, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add?
No. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Demling?
So two questions, one, do we have indication from the elected officials of the four towns that the 45% method that we discussed last time, that we seemed, that the committee seemed to be in agreement with continuing to propose is, is, is an acceptable level? I think, I think part of our thinking was that if we proposed the same, that was the method that was, had, had, that had received tentative agreement from elected officials, that that would be the most, the likely outcome, and, and then the second question is on the HVAC Summit Academy and PIP item, I do really appreciate the additional page of content that was asked for from last time from a few members about the additional descriptions on the capital plan modifications. It's, it's good to see the description in the exhaust fan item, not that it doesn't have to be done, because otherwise it wouldn't have been on the list in the first place, but that the air quality in the building is not impacted by replacement of the fans. If you could, my question though, is on the, on the Summit Academy and PIP items, could you clarify, but what it means that the remodeling of spaces has resulted in poor climate control? Not being an HVAC expert, I don't really understand what that means, and I don't want to delve into a nine-layer scientific analysis of, of impact, but obviously, we're thinking about COVID and health, and so if you could just speak to that, because that, because that's, that's an item got crossed out.
So spoke with Mr. Roy Clark about this the other day a little bit, and really by virtue of how they sort of repartitioned the rooms and the spaces in that section of the high school, I think their expectations back when they did that work was that the heating, cooling, and all those spaces would be fine, they found by virtue of being in those spaces, it's not fine, and so there are rooms that are really too warm and really too cold, and, and so it's, you know, sort of poorly moderated relative to what they'd like to have in that area, and, and I think, you know, if we were able to take on a next project, that would probably be number one. It does require some significant, you know, redesigned engineering of, of space and, and construction work to move ductwork and that sort of thing to, to balance out the heating and cooling in those spaces. I think the air quality question is, it's fine, I think it's, it's, they can be uncomfortable at times, I don't think it's, and obviously, as soon as we can fix it, we would like to, just because the spaces become much more functional, or more highly functional if they're properly controlled for temperature.
Any other questions? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I, I, thank you for that, I think it just underscores how painful this, how to the bone we are cutting the capital request, to, you know, to know that we have kids that are, and teachers working in uncomfortable spaces, and that we're not gonna be able to do anything about it, and also knowing what FY22 is likely to, to throw our way, that's, that's really painful, but I mean, I understand that it's, it's, that increases our capital, it would, if we added it, we would increase our capital request to the four towns by like 30% or 40%, so I understand that, and if I could just get a short answer to the, what do we expect the reception to be for the 45% method?
Could I actually, yeah, just comment on the, the capital, I think the other thing that's a little different in region than it is in some municipal districts, is that each of the municipalities get funds, receive funds from the CARES Act for COVID-related items, but because the region is not a municipality, or it sort of is a municipality, we're not, we can't, no one funded us for the CARES Act, so the reason that stays in, as opposed to municipal districts, where it'll be just kind of flow through the towns, is because we will have to request those funds, now likely those funds that each town contributes to that are reimbursable by the CARES Act, but I just, I do want to note that we have to request it very formally in the region, because we are not part of a municipal government. Sorry to throw you, I know Mr. Demling had a different question, but I thought it was sharing that even though that is a capital expense, that expense is likely to be funded for each town's share via the CARES Act, not through their capital budget.
Ms. Spitzer? Or, or, Dr. Slaughter, did you have a follow-up to that?
Just the one quick thing I will point out, just the mechanics of how the capital works, is it typically, we approve it now, it doesn't actually hit the books for folks for a full year, because it's borrowing, so we would borrow it next year, and then would actually be in the, in the debt assessment to the districts, I mean, to the, to the member town, so the, this is actually, in viewing this list, is thinking about what's going to hit the books in fiscal '22 for the communities, the, the sort of debt assessment for fiscal '21 is fixed by the borrowing we did this spring, so those numbers are already in place, obviously not anticipating, you know, the situation that's happened, but also recognizing we've already borrowed that money, so those, those debts will be due, so I just want to paint that picture as far as some of the thinking around, you know, choices and the limitation on, on capitalists, is that we expect fiscal '22 to be as difficult, if not more so than this year, and- if not more so than this year, and that we're trying to sort of moderate the debt assessment to the communities.
Ms. Spitzer?
So I'm I'm going to try not to talk too much about another committee I sit on, but for that, for the other committee, we've got kind of a council that we can go to to ask for additional funds. And I'm just thinking if if this $75,000 proves to be too low, or the HVAC exhaust system or, you know, the exhaust fans do fail next year, what mechanism do we have to make improvements that are required either for COVID-related reasons or because some mechanism in our school needs needs immediate repair?
Dr. Slaughter? Yeah.
So one of the things we typically do and traditionally did before we start a more significant capital planning process in the region was to use operating budget funds for those purposes. Obviously, as we're discussing, you know, the operating budget is going to be very, you know, tight next year. So the the opportunity for that is going to be very lean. The other option we have, if we need, you know, additional revenue would be to seek, you know, permission from you as a regional school committee and then subsequently permission from each of the the member towns to have authorization to do additional borrowing at some point. So that's really our recourse. And so it and when we, particularly for debt authorization, if the towns don't have an issue with it and they take no action, then it happens. It's if they wish to vote on it and potentially vote no on it, then they have to for, you know, they have to actually call a town meeting. If if the, you know, if we were mid fiscal year, something arose, we had communication with each of the select boards and communities, and they, you know, were for lack of a term, comfortable with with some additional borrowing, if they took no action upon the notice that were required to give, then it would just become a bill they would have to pay, which would be in fiscal 22 or 23, depending on how late in the year we would we do that borrowing. But that's sort of the mechanics of how it works. But I mean, typically, we we offer this up in the spring so that it can be part of the annual town meeting for the communities, and they can actually take an affirmative vote. They're not required to.
Ms. Spitzer?
I just I guess I just want to follow up on on that and say that, you know, I'm not proposing this, but I am still slightly uncomfortable with the fact that we we really don't know what next year is going to look like. We haven't gotten the guidance from DESI. We haven't gotten guidance at all from the federal government in terms of what is school going to look like next year? And there's no doubt that's going to impact our budget, including our capital budget and our operating budget. So I'm I'm hopeful we won't need to ask for more money, but I think it's very likely that we may need we need to follow those paths that you just laid out.
Are there other questions or comments from the committee? So we have, oh, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I just wanted to get like a brief answer on what is our expected reception? Or is there no update on what we expect the four towns to receive the the same 45% assessment of that proposal? If there have been any conversation since we last discussed this in the region?
Dr. Morris?
I can say it's been communicated, you know, sent to folks in Leverett, for instance, today who are asking about it. Thanks, Ms. Seeger, for your work there. Been shared with the Amherst. I can say confidently that Amherst as is it's in their guidelines, you know, with the number that that's consistent with the 45-degree method. I don't know if Dr. Slaughter has more to share in terms of your conversations in Pelham or if anyone has, it looks like Mr. Sullivan shoots Barry. But, you know, the thing that I've heard more than the method this time around is the dollar amount, just because I think the the change in everyone's reality has shifted the focus, at least temporarily perhaps, from assessment method to being able to fund the budget. That's anecdotal. I can't extrapolate that much from it, but I've gotten more questions on the total dollar amount and less on the assessment method as compared to typical budget cycles. I don't know if Dr. Slaughter has more to add?
Dr. Slaughter?
Just that I've, you know, communicated with the finance committee in Pelham, the chair of the finance committee in Pelham to share with them what you have tonight in front of you as far as the budget for fiscal 21. And I've shared similar information with the folks in in Chutesbury. They posed a few questions last week as well. Again, I think, you know, everybody's trying to sort of wrap their head around what little information they have. And so I think to Dr. Morris's point, it's more about sort of dollar amount as opposed to assessment method has been the questions I've gotten as well. And just can we kind of get there? I think that we'll probably go back to conversations about assessment method a little later, but not not right now. But I don't know any more detail on what actual thinking people have.
Is there any further questions or comments? So we do have some official motion language that's included in our packet. So we will need to go through each one of these one by one. If we are ready for a motion. Thank you, Dr. Morris. Except now I can't see everybody. So if somebody has a motion, I would suggest you just speak. Oh, there we go. Does somebody have a motion?
Just means reading this language, Allison?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we adopt a budget of $32,145,531 for fiscal year 2021 for the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District and to over towns according to the method approved in the amendment voted 3102020 as follows. Pelham, $891,934. And Chutesbury, $1,675,873.
Moved by Stanser, third second.
Second.
Second and by Demling. And this vote requires a two-thirds majority. And starting with Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Stanser? Oh, sorry, Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. And now we have a next vote on debt authorization. Oh, Dr. Slaughter?
Sorry for the delay there. So I believe it's the modification of debt authorization. I just want to preface this a little bit. This is a technical fix. So these authorizations were granted, I think, two fiscal years ago at least. And so one project came in a little under budget, one a little over budget. This is not changing the total amount of debt that was authorized. Changing the purpose for which we can use the debt is all we're doing here. And so it's a technical fix to sort of dot I's and cross T's from a legal standpoint. So that's the purpose of that motion on modification of debt authorization.
Any questions? Would someone like to read the motion? Mr. Demling?
I move that in accordance with MGL, Chapter 44, Section 20, the $5,000 unexpended balance of funds borrowed to pay costs of the middle school roof repairs, which amount is no longer needed to complete the project for which it was initially borrowed, is hereby appropriated by this school committee to pay additional costs of Summit Academy relocation renovation, including the payment of any and all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second?
Moved by Demling and seconded by Spitzer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go we'll vote, and this one also requires a two-thirds majority. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So the motion passes nine to zero. And next we have another motion regarding rescinding of previous capital plan bond authorization. Do you have a preface for that, Ms. Dr. Slaughter?
I do. It, you know, while not required, the previous authorization that we gave for a list of, I think it was 11 or maybe 12 items in our in our March meeting for the closure of school, you know, authorized $425,000. And then, of course, as I spoke earlier, process wise, basically 60-day clock starts for the for the member towns to say no. And of course, that clock expired. We checked with our council relative to borrowing, and they said, yeah, the rules didn't change relative to this. So effectively, you've got authorization. Just thinking that, you know, we don't want to put communities in an uncomfortable situation relative to the authorized debt. Authorized debt's not the same as actually borrowed money, but it's pretty close from the standpoint of bonding agencies and capacity to borrow and things like that. So what we have here is a motion to rescind that vote, and then subsequently, we will basically authorize a new capital plan bond authorization, which is obviously decidedly more modest in its scope. And then we'll send out notice to the communities relative to that newer one after the fact. But this just sort of frees up that authorization, doesn't leave it sort of committed by the four member communities.
So would somebody? Somebody like to read this motion? Ms. Spitzer?
I move that the school district committee votes to rescind the $425,000 voted at a meeting held on March 10, 2020.
Moved by Spitzer?
I second.
Second and by Ms. Stanser? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote, and I'll I'll go in a backwards order. Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So the motion to rescind previous capital plan bond authorization is passes nine to zero. Now we have a very long motion to authorize the the new capital plan bond. Would somebody like to read that motion?
I will give it a try. I move that the district hereby appropriates the sum of $115,000 for the purpose of paying costs of the following projects, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. One, renovations of the walk-in cooler and freezer at the high school in the amount of $25,000. Two, grounds improvements at the high school in the amount of $15,000. And three, district-wide COVID-19-related equipment and material needs in the amount of $75,000. Said sum to be expended at the direction of the Regional School District Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district treasurer is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such a premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Further, that within 48 hours from the date on which this vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectmen and Town Council of each of the member towns of this district in writing as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized, as required by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and by the District Agreement. In addition, the committee shall cause the same information to be published within 10 days after such authorization as a paid notice in a newspaper circulating in the district.
Thank you. Moved by Stanser, seconded by Spitzer. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none? Move to roll call vote. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously nine to zero. And I should have stated it required it also required a two-thirds majority, which we have. And finally, a final motion on the addition of student activity accounts. Dr. Slaughter?
Again, a little bit of housekeeping. We would have taken care of this in March. These are two different organizations that normally would have been in the schedule of of student activities accounts in the fall when you approve those. They got it overlooked. They have some income that needs to go into their sort of slice of the student activity. So this authorization allows those accounts to be set up properly. It's a pretty straightforward thing.
Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the addition to the student activity accounts of the class of 2023 and middle school team midnight accounts.
Lord, second.
Moved by Demling and seconded by Lord. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. And I believe that's our final motion. Or related to that, or our final vote related to budget and assessment method. Great. So now, as discussed before, we're going to move to item F on our Great. So now, as discussed before, we're going to move to item F on our agenda, which is the bus contract vote. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Morris or Dr. Slaughter to introduce.
I could do a little bit, but this was a bus contract that we discussed, and it didn't get approved because of everything that happened. And again, kind of got lost in the early days of the closure and the things that come. Nothing changed in the bus contract, but it does require a vote of the school committee because it at least has the potential to go beyond three years. And based on state law, any contract that goes beyond that time length requires a school committee vote. You know, maybe it's worth just mentioning that it's a three-year contract with a two-year kicker that's at the district's discretion. So what we would plan to do is to bring this contract up for years four and five, and to make sure that the school committee at that point wanted to extend it. But because as the potential to extend beyond three years, we thought it was wise to. It might actually play out that way. So get a vote on the front end seemed warranted. Just as a review, for those who weren't on the committee, in the past, we've had five-star bidding on, well, both actually bid on this, and five-star had a low bid and met all the technical requirements for all the routes. So we'd be going from two external vendors to one external vendor. I want to be really clear, that's no negative statement towards Kosmascus. They've been a really strong partner with us for many years. But the bid contracts to go the way the state law goes and the low bidder, as long as they meet the requirements, went the bid. In this year, it was five-star for both the Emerson Pelham routes as well as the Chutesbury and Leverett routes. And that's the broad summary of the bus contract that we're asking you to approve tonight for the next, starting in the next fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Ms. Seeger?
I'm curious of how much input you get from Leverett and Chutesbury in regards to, you know, changes like this. And I just can imagine, you know, getting used to having a set of people doing the bus routes for you. You know, this is going to be a change for our districts, obviously. And I'm just curious of what sort of input the two towns have.
Dr. Slaughter, do you want to weigh in on that? Some of this occurred before you were in your role, so I know it's a little bit awkward. But I know Mr. Mangano did connect with Chutesbury and Leverett and their finance director along the way. I don't know if you have more that you want to add, Dr. Slaughter, more specific than that.
Just a small amount, if that's all right. You know, I think the idea is that we, you know, the, what's the, the bid goes out for, or the solicitation for bids goes out. It's a bit of a fait accompli as far as what it looks like and how it's structured. But nonetheless, in that process, getting the bid constructed for release is one that we want to try to have and have it be a cooperative process. And I wasn't a part of that, Mr. Mangano was, but I believe he reached out and was connected and, you know, took advice from the various partners with us regarding that, as well as how we, you know, share those costs across the communities.
Any other questions? Ms. Stanser?
I'm wondering if things don't go as they would have before the pandemic, when school starts again, what happens? Will there be conversation with the bus company about that? And is there the possibility for any kind of coming to any kind of agreement with them like we did for this last period of time?
Short answer is yes. There will be differences in the fall, one way or the other. Things will not, transportation will not function as it has typically. That's a broad conversation we'll have. Again, I don't want to, I know you're being asked to approve a contract this week. It's a conversation we'll have next week, given CDC guidance about buses and transportation. I think it would likely, the process would play out very similarly. But it's sort of a more complex conversation, frankly, than the spring because the spring was about closure. Next year, my, there's a whole range of options that might involve different bus routes or different number of students on a bus or different cleaning mechanisms that are going to be required and maintenance of buses. So the long, the short story is yes, absolutely. You know, it's a very similar contract to what we had, which allowed for negotiations when these situations came up. I think we're actually fortunate. We have the contract that was written prior to this playing out because there's, I think it's more advantageous to the district than if it allowed for, frankly, more protections for the, for bus companies when they were making their bids for the scenario that was unanticipated. So I think that's as much as I can say right now.
Any other comment or question? I don't think we have specific motion language on this one. So if anybody would like to make a motion? Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the five-star transportation contract as presented.
I'll second.
Moved by Demling and seconded by Seeger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the motion passes unanimously nine to zero. I'm changing up the order just to keep everybody on their toes. Great. So now, moving back to the order on our agenda, we're moving back to item A on our published agenda. And this is the COVID-19 school update from Dr. Morris. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I realized it. Nice people at Google told me. And I'll be very brief because we're going to spend a lot of time on this next week. So I think the three things I want to share is, one, well, there's a, an art show that's usually done publicly in the spring, featuring the work of our high school students. That's going to be done virtually, but I'll send out information to the whole community about that tomorrow. But, you know, people are continuing to find ways where student work can be exhibited in really unique and wonderful ways. And I played the music last time, but I just want to highlight the work of our educators to be inventive in this, this very, very difficult time to be connecting with kids. The second thing I'd like to share is that we've had just incredible conversations with the fall planning groups. You know, I sat in on a distance learning group at the secondary level, a couple of the other groups working on, you know, one working on facilities, a couple working on other things. And so people are actively doing work to come up with guiding principles. And I want to thank, it's over 100 staff members who are contributing to one group or another. We did create a group that specifically focused on preschool. I'll explain why in a second. And then as well as one looking at specialized programs. Because those felt like, the more, the deeper we got into them, the more they needed to be unique conversations. The third is that if you drive around town, particularly around the town common, you'll see some wonderful signs all around in our communities for the graduates. The staff put them and found graduates, including our school choice students who don't live in our four communities. Full of heart, this seems like a very competitive select board race in Chutesbury, Mr. Sullivan. But you drive around Chutesbury, you'll see a fair number of Amherst High School graduate signs as well. You know, adding to that landscape of signs that's all over the town of Chutesbury. But downtown, there's individual signs with individual students faces on them. And it's just been really nice. And the town of Amherst has been very wonderful in allowing us to use some of the common area space that we have. The third thing I'd like to share sort of crosses over into kind of the third and fourth in some ways. The CDC last week, a week ago, offered a 60-page or so document. Four pages were dedicated to schools about reopening. And next Wednesday night, we'll have a joint school committee meeting between Amherst Pelham and the region, where we'll dig into that document and the relevant parts and talk about the implications for fall. That's a little different than the guiding document. I'll be really candid, we haven't received guidance from DESI yet. Their group didn't start meeting till about two or three weeks ago, the 27-person committee. And so, well, I'd rather in some ways wait to receive it. I think what we've found, and this isn't a criticism of DESI, it's just a capacity issue that everyone's facing. We can't wait forever to start having conversations about fall and particularly want to start having those conversations while staff are still at work this spring. And so it's not, you're not going to get a recommendation from me necessarily, but it is going to be a compilation of our teams thinking about what are potential options for fall. I do want to say that I've shared, I've contacted Ms. Colkeen, Superintendent Colkeen of Union 28, and we're talking later this week because we do want to approach that. But we are thinking of a regional approach, so at least thinking about options. And I will say that it will be, it may be startling to people what the CDC guidance says and the implications. I don't want to preview it too much, but I can't say that enough because the short story is it won't be school as normal. No option will involve school as normal as we think about fall. So another question I got recently is, are we going to take the CDC guidance seriously? And the answer to that is yes. That's, the CDC guidance has been criticized a lot in education circles because it doesn't seem like, you know, the criticism is, it doesn't seem like they've been in the school. But I don't think that's their job. Like, our job is to take that guidance, look at options and say, what can we do? What can't we do? And we'll have some forced choices that the committees and people like myself have never had to make before about how to approach this. And I sort of referenced it earlier. I'll probably reference it again. That conversation is going to be a multi-meeting conversation. I do think the amount of planning that administrative staff as well as teaching staff will have to do to prepare for whatever model we do, it is like we've never seen before over a three-month period. And so I think it behooves us to start that conversation. I'd love to just be able to blame something on DESI and wait till it comes out and say that. I don't actually think that's in our students' best interest. I think it's in our students' best interest to start engaging the committee and the community on what are potential options so people can weigh in and narrow our choices down. But, but again, it'll be a sobering meeting, I think, for people to really take a look at both what we're able to do and frankly, what we're not able to do. And it'll really be, there was a really good article I saw recently, and a couple of you, actually multiple people, pointed me to it, but just talked about, we're all, everyone in the community is going to have some shared sacrifice to make the operation work, work best for students. And the reason it's a joint meeting is I think we need to actually think about this in a K-12 context. And not in a just regional context because that collaboration and sharing of resources is going to have to be thought about in a multi-district context. It's going to be a little complicated for us, but I'd rather it be complicated and awkward and us move forward than avoid the conversation until an external body who doesn't understand what a three-district K-12 organization looks like and four or five district, if you include Chutesbury and Leverett, those school committees has to have. So that's long-winded, but I did want to preview that a little bit for you for next week. And we're working really hard to get a document that makes sense to the committee, makes sense to the community. I'm sorry, I'm just tickled seeing Mr. Sullivan's dog. And, and, and work on it with you. And I think the last thing that I'll share is just, you know, we are nearing towards the end of the year. Sounds, it feels weird because this time doesn't operate. I think everyone in every profession and every industry recognizes that time operates really differently now than it did two and a half months ago. But I really want to thank our staff for stepping up in all sorts of different ways to make this whole thing work. One of the best conversations I had all day was with this distance learning. It was a team of secondary educators from the region. We're talking about, you know, it's just simple prompt, you know, what's worked well this spring? You know, what would we want to rethink? And the thing that worked well, and the thing we'll have to rethink if we're in any kind of distance environment for next year, is frankly, that people had relationships with their students that were built up over at least six, seven-month period of time. And so that sustained some of the distance learning. And I think one of the things that we'll have to think about regardless of our setting, regardless of whether it's in-person, distance, or some hybrid next year, regardless of physical use of buildings, is that our students aren't going to be returning with those, those personal relationships with their instructors intact in the same way. And that's going to be a large variable for us to be thinking about, how do we approach in the fall? Because it's going to be a very different dynamic that way. Sorry, that was long-winded. I said it was going to be quick. I lied. But, but it'll be much more long-winded next week. I'll put it that way. But, you know, I think it is going to be a meeting probably people want to tune in and watch and get a sense of what fall could look like and what choices we really have to make and what choices are essentially made from us from our public health perspective. And that's going to be really difficult and different.
Mr. Manino?
Next week's meeting is Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's Wednesday. I think there will be a, you don't have a core of a Pelham. So I think there's a, there will be a brief Pelham meeting before that instead of that Thursday meeting as originally scheduled. But I'm meeting with Ms. Hall tomorrow morning, and we'll get it out by the afternoon, just so everyone has it on their calendars, but Wednesday.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, you know, I appreciate the, the schedule that you're taking with this. I think it's the right move to go ahead prior to DESI guidance. I mean, I really don't, we bash DESI all the time for a number of different things. And, I mean, at the end of the day, this is, this is kind of a political power call at the state level. And, I mean, you know, DESI is headed by the Education and Commissioner, and an education commissioner who I have criticisms of, but isn't, in my view, really the state political power player. It's really the governor or the edge secretary about how soon they want to take the lead on this, and they're not. So, you know, I think this is the right call. I also think it's the right call to talk about what you referenced as startling possibilities as soon as possible. I think, I think the bigger the change and the bigger the idea, there's always this tension, right? Between wanting to say it early so they can get people's reaction and feedback, but not wanting to do it too early when people might assume that an idea is already baked. And, and so how do you balance that? And I think, and I think in this case, you know, some of these ideas, and I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. But I've experienced the acclimation process of enough of this aspects of the COVID-19 experience, enough to know that it's, some of these things take time to marinate on. You know, you're going to hear it for the first time, and you just have to sit with it before you then come back to it. And so I expect a lot of listening on our part next week. And I think it's good to be able to advertise and share this with the community. But, you know, this, this is not exactly, we don't know, this may change, you know? But we are coming to the community with ideas that are not fully formed yet because we want people to get a sense of what's, of what is possible. I think that's the honest, most transparent way to do it. So I appreciate the tact you're taking with that.
And I will, I will second everything that Mr. Demling just said about sort of the timing and the tact and the approach on this, too. Dr. Morris?
Yep, just, thank you for that. And yeah, I think I drew the short lot of our Western Mass group. I think it just, ours got scheduled first, but that, I think there's some, there's some benefit to that as well. The last thing is just speaking of DESI, that DESI, as of when this meeting started, I haven't checked my email since, has still not made a determination, determination about whether in-school, summer school services can begin. They did say you can contact your local public health department on Friday. They told us that in the morning. We contacted the Amherst Health Department on Friday afternoon. Looking at the CDC guidance, the Health Department, the director wrote a letter, which was shared with the school committee, that given that summer school would start, you know, more or less five weeks from now, we don't have enough time to implement the CDC guidance to get the right materials, PPE, all that stuff that's recommended. And she strongly recommended us not having summer programming in the building. As such, we'll be, we are transitioning, which was what we were anticipating, to having summer school be virtual. We're offering it to all students with, typically, it was for special education students who were, did not, could show that there was regression over the summer. We're actually offering it to all special education students at the regional, at the regional level because we know that accessing virtual learning has been more of a challenge for some students than others. Not everyone has to build themselves up it, but we're offering it to all students in a virtual context. But I think it really gets to some of the urgency, I feel, to come out with larger kind of pieces of implications because I'll just, again, I'm not out to bash DESI. It's not my goal. It's really a capacity question. I agree with Mr. Demling's assessment of where, who makes which decisions, but do not have a decision on May 26th about whether summer school can start, given the amount of planning that would be needed to allow students to be in summer school in this context. in this context, essentially makes a decision for us. And it is one of the challenges that, that we're facing is we don't, if we allow, if we're passive in this moment, we put a lot of families and a lot of staff through incredible amount of stress that seems unwarranted. And I think it will be more challenging for the general conversation about fall. Just engaging it earlier, setting broad parameters, talking about broad implications. We're not going to disregard the CDC guidance, no matter what DESI says, just to be very blunt about it. DESI says disregard it. I'm going to have a hard time disregarding CDC guidance on public health. And so we're going to jump in and we'll see where we land with how that conversation, conversations go. And that's my update.
Any questions? Also, I don't want to call you out, but Ms. Grupko, if you, if you have any questions or comments, you're welcome to share them. Everybody just raises their hand when they, when they want to. So I won't put you on the spot that I'll keep an eye on, in case I see you coming up. I have one question, and I don't, we may have talked about it, so I apologize if we've talked about this before, but programs such as like the VELLA program at the middle school, are those, are there plans for some remote options similar to that for those students? Because those aren't all special ed students.
No, VELLA, right, VELLA is an after-school program at our middle school. It's run through collaboration with the collaborative for educational services over in North Hampton. And they actually, similar to us, well, not similar, analogous in some ways to special ed, they are running a virtual summer program and they're opening it up for all students. So that the access point are greater because some of the, some of the odd benefits, I guess, of the virtual environment is the limitation, number of students gets a little bit easier in some ways. So that program is happening, but it's happening in a virtual context. Same with our credit recovery system for the high school.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, great. And so we'll move on to the next item, which is the consideration of the vote for the draft resolution for the increased federal funding. And this is, Mr. Demling, I don't know if you want to, if you had any intentions to introduce this, but we, we reviewed this, this document at our last meeting. This is, Mr. Demling drafted this based on a similar resolution that the Boston School Committee had drafted and voted on. And it was adjusted, amended with our data and our particular district information and characteristics. So we reviewed it last, at our last meeting, and we all wanted time to be able to read it ahead of time because it had only gotten into our packet that day. So I don't know if there's anything more that you want to add right now, Mr. Demling?
No, it's unchanged since the last time it was presented at our last meeting. I don't see it in the current packet, so I can't display it, but it is unchanged, so. And we can either vote it without it being in the packet, or we can, I'm assuming next meeting is going to be family pack, so I don't know if we want to add it to that agenda, but you know, whatever the committee is comfortable with.
How do folks feel about? I don't, I'm trying to see if I can find the last one quickly. Dr. Morris can display it. Great, thank you.
So all Dr. Morris is doing, I could just do the 10-second recap, which is, this is essentially calling for another very large funding bill for, for public schools. Given that what's already been allocated is around 10 to 13 billion from the federal level and and what is really needed based on the Great Recession as kind of a benchmark, and also based on what many educational organizations are asking for is more around 200 billion. And if we, if we leave schools out to dry, then that's, it's really leaving frontline education service and employment providers that are essential to our community. And we should not do that. So calling for the federal funding. And, you know, our reps are all on board, our federal level reps are all on board with this, which is great. And hopefully, we'll see a big visible battle across the country for this. But, but we don't know. So this is, this is kind of that, that big shoe that if it drops, it would be great, so.
Dr. Morris. You're muted.
Sorry about that. One thing I learned in a session I was in last week with someone who did a little analysis is compared to the Great Recession, which gave K-12 plus higher ed adjusted for inflation about $130 billion, so far we're at, we're under 30 in terms of what's been approved for K-12 plus higher ed. And obviously, this crisis, this fiscal crisis looms much larger, frankly, than the Great Recession did. So I just want to support Mr. Demling's point about the need for this. And if you look at research on the Great Recession, even with that funding, we saw a reduction in spending, particularly in districts that spend, that were more reliant on state and federal aid. And we saw reduced results in those communities, and those communities have higher percentages of low-income students as well as higher communities, or higher percentages of students of color. So I think in addition to anything that we do for the Amherst Public Schools, which is significant, also thinking about the educational debt piece and what the, the potential for this to be just incredibly widen the educational debt challenges that we face, not just in Amherst and the four towns, but also across the country. So just want to lend my voice of strong support for Mr. Dem, what Mr. Demling worked on.
Great. So, unless somebody else would like to move? Or any further discussion? Nope. So I'll make a motion to, to approve and sign the, this resolution and submit this resolution for increased federal funding to sign it and submit it to our state representatives in Washington.
Second.
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Menino. Further discussion? Dr. Morris.
Again, not to belabor the point, but I wonder, and I don't think it needs to be voted by the committee, but if the chair or the author want the district to send it out to anyone else, the press, the other MASC, anybody like that, will just take direction from either the chair or the chair and the author of this. We're happy to facilitate it being sent out. So maybe more committees and other people may pay attention to the good work that potentially gets voted on in a second. So we're happy to help.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Menino.
Menino, aye.
Ms.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
McDonald, aye. And Ms. Seeger abstained. Or I should say not present, not abstain. Great. So, Mr. Demling, why don't we follow up afterward, after this meeting about how we want to proceed with where we want, where we want to send this? Thank you, everybody. Warrants report. I'll turn it over to Ms. Spitzer, if you have any warrants to report.
I do, I signed to this afternoon. So I authorized my signature, my signature to payables in the amount of $744,802.8 for a warrant dated May 27, 2020. In addition, I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $629,971.64, which was completely for general fund expenses. And that warrant was dated, I already gave the date, sorry, it was May 14, 2020. And I signed that today, May 26. Those are the only two, I believe.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the next item, which is our superintendent instrument and timeline vote. And I believe based on an earlier conversation, and what we'd like to do tonight is simply vote to have a, or discuss and vote for a later date to be determined for our superintendent evaluation. I don't know, Ms. Spitzer, would you like to add anything?
Sure. So just to update the committee, I'm in the process of working with the administrative team to have the instrument finalized. Hopefully it'll be, I have a feeling it might happen after Wednesday, after graduation. But in the meantime, because the contract states that we will complete the evaluation prior to June 1, and with everything that's happened, that's clearly not going to happen. So we're just asking for a vote to postpone the evaluation to later this summer.
So any questions from anybody in the committee? Ms. Stanser?
So, just to make sure I understand, so you simply need a vote to say we're going to do it after June 1. We aren't setting a particular date at this point.
That is correct. Any other questions? And I'm going to, as a formality, Dr. Morris, are you amenable to this approach, to this timeline? Yes. Um, great. Somebody want to make a motion? Ms. Stanser?
I move that we postpone the superintendent evaluation deadline for sometime after June 1.
I'll second that. Moved by Stanser and seconded by McDonald. Any further discussion? Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Menino.
Menino, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
Mr. Harrington. Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
McDonald, aye. And Seeger not present. So the motion passes 8, 0, and 1 not present. Having to do math at the end of a long meeting is challenging. Okay, next on our agenda is agenda planning. So as mentioned, we are going to be meeting again next Wednesday to begin our planning for fall 2020. Do you have our table handy, Dr. Morris, that you could share? So a single item, agenda item meeting next week, and then we meet again on June 9. Can you explain what SOA plan is, Dr. Morris?
Sure, that's the Student Opportunity Act. So the legislature pushed back the date, the Student Opportunity Act plan needs to be voted to June 15. My understanding is they're going to push it back later, but this is a caveat or a placeholder in case they don't push it back. I think they're going to have to push everything back because the Student Opportunity Act dictated you'd have to say how you'd spend the additional money that was coming in. Bluntly, I don't think there's additional money coming in, so I think there's some conversations about what they're even going to do with that, but I just don't want to forget about it in case, in case the legislation doesn't change fast enough, which we've seen some examples of that, you know, will fulfill the contractual pieces. The draft is already done, it's been sitting for two months. But it just, I think we won't actually have to do that, but I don't want to forget about it and then be caught without it being submitted on time or adding a last-minute meeting just so we do it.
And is the FY21 budget, is that?
I think that that was on there just for an update based on how things are going at the towns and when town meetings are planned. Not necessarily for the actual budget, the budget was voted tonight. But if there's any questions that come up from the towns, we typically, at the regional level, try to have a meeting before town meetings so that everybody is on the same page. And if there is some information that needs to be presented, that, we have a plan for that. And I think town meetings in all three of the towns are going to be different this year. So I think it's just, it's worthy to, again, at least have a conversation so that the regional committee can be organized before votes are taken in each member town.
Great. And then lastly, we've added for, also for June 9, an introduction of our discussion on whether we want to consider later start times as we're looking at what fall 2020 and beyond will, will be looking like. Is there, do we want to sort of add this and include this in our committee work and discussions? So that before the, before the summer planning is sort of the idea here to get that, have the committee address that. This is something that we've talked about in past meetings and have put on our list of possible things that we wanted to talk about. So placing that placeholder right here to at least come back at that and see if this is something that we want to consider as a committee.
I think the only thing that'll be added, need to be added, and we'll just, oh, Ms. McDonald and I wait for Ms. Spitzer's lead, it's just superintendent evaluation, and we'll just, we'll map that out once we have more information. Yeah, but we can easily add that whenever.
Correct. Good, thank you. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I did see the items on there that had the artifacts on the 23rd, and then the instrument due three days later in the middle of the week. I thought that, that might be kind of pushing it.
And that was, that was, yeah, we should probably like, just put, sort of take them off for now.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that was, that was me trying to figure out how we could possibly squeeze it in by June 30. And and I think by doing that exercise shows the absurdity of trying to get any other comments? Ms. Stanser?
I have a question, which is, are we going to have additional meetings during the summer this year in light of the the planning for the fall?
We, that's a great question, and I think we haven't made that decision. And I'm wondering, Dr. Morris, if that might be something that we can add to our agenda for next, for next week, once we know sort of more of what's ahead of us in terms of planning for the fall.
Yeah, I think there's four parts to next week's meeting. The first part's going to be just a quick update on distance learning, both how it's gone locally and what the research base would say. The second part's going to be about CDC guidance and implications for the elementary, middle school and high school. The third part's going to be given that guidance and what we know about distance learning, what are potential options for fall 2020. And the fourth part's going to be, how do we engage the public, communicate, what additional information do you need, what information can you offer us? So we have some direction because it's way too big a pot or kettle to have everything ready for, you're not going to see a plan next week, you're going to see models. And, and that model is almost a too-strong a word. And so part of that last step's going to be, what does the administration and staff do, but also how do we continue to engage? I don't see it being something resolved incredibly soon. I would anticipate there being a need for more regular summer meetings than what has happened in the past. But I think that fourth part of next week's meeting, after the long, pretty lengthy presentations and question and answer, will be, where do we want to go from here? And I mean, the collective way, to be very candid with the school committee, the administration, but will be where do we want to go from here? And I mean, the collective we, to be very candid with the school committee, the administration, but where does the community, how do we do that? Because I think something you've heard me say before is there's two things here. There's public health and there's public confidence. One is clearly more important than the other, but I think in, in the overall scheme of things, but they're both equally important of how do we make decisions and how are people feeling, going to feel comfortable thinking about fall? And I will just, and again, I don't want to overdo this, but the decisions that we collectively, not just people on this call, but the collectively in the community are going to have to make are ones we haven't had to consider before. And so I think that's going to need time to, to marinate. This can be, people are going to ask questions, can make all of us think about things differently. And it's not going to be an easy fix or a quick. That's the obvious best option. Even if we do have an obvious best option, how to implement, it's going to be its whole nother layer. So I can't imagine going through summer without having some regularity of meetings. Because I do think it's really important that you as elected officials of the four communities and the staff are continuing to talk about this in public, continuing to answer questions and continue to refine what's going to be the best possible solution given the context. And that's really the way I frame it, the best possible solution. It's not going to be the best solution. It's not out there.
Thank you.
I'm very dour today. Sorry about that. But you know, it's it's the nature of being honest about where we are and what we're thinking about.
Any other questions on agendas?
I just, just had, have a comment. So I started to look at that draft from, from the Maryland schools. And it really brought home to me how broad and how serious this whole thing is.
Yeah.
So that document is a draft document, but it's available on a public website about Maryland's fall reentry plans. And I think what'll be even more, what'll reemphasize that point, so to speak, next week is when you start taking a broad document like that and trying to localize it in a three district organization with buildings that have some structural issues. The layers of complication get very real very quickly. But I do feel to the points earlier, and I don't want to belabor this, but you know, because originally Ms. McDonald, Ms. Hall and I were actually talking about doing this week and with the budget votes and just my, my capacity of wanting to do this well. I just didn't feel like I could do it, but I'm feeling urgency to start talking about this in public and with the committee. Because there's some things we actually know now that the CDC has issued their guidance. And I think the sooner we engage in that and educate the community, the more informed our, our, our discussions will be over time. I think the longer we wait, I think people may not be aware of some of the specificity of the CDC guidance. And we want to get that out as soon as possible, as awkward and painful as it's going to be. I usually am a very happy person, by the way. I usually am like, you know, this is not my, my normal, I think you all have known me well, long enough to know that I tend to be a half glass, half glass, glass half full kind of person, but you know, I think the thing that makes me feel confident is we're working through it together. And that's what we're going to do. And if, if there's anything I know about crises, it takes collaboration and communication to the community to make best possible solutions. So we'll get at it.
Mr. Menino, did you have something?
No, except to say that if the glass is half empty, it's half empty.
Great. Well, we do have, you, you, you have a chance to sort of turn your, your glass half full into glass full tomorrow with the, with graduation. So that will be moving on. Okay, great. So moving right along, we have some gifts to accept. Mr. Menino, would you like to read the gifts?
Okay, but somebody's blocking the top line. I would like to present the following donations listed below for your approval. The beneficiaries and the descriptions are as follows. Donor Barbara James Pistang number 1790 to support the Amherst Regional High School Arms Ultimate Scholarship, $1,000. Subtotal, $1,000. In compliance with state regulations regarding the receipt of gifts, I suggest that the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee officially accept these donations at its next financial, next scheduled meeting grant. Project bread number 100165 to support COVID rapid response total $2,000. Subtotal, $2,000.
So I, I move that we accept the gifts as presented by Mr. Menino. Second by, was that Ms. Stanser? Yeah, moved by McDonald, second by Stanser. Any discussion? Saying none. Ms. Lord?
Lord, I.
Sorry. Moving to roll call vote with Ms. Lord saying I. Mr. Harrington? Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, I.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, I.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, I.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, I.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, I.
And McDonald, I. And it passes eight to zero. Okay. Moving on, we caught up all of our last time. Mr. Demling?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Moved by Demling, second by Spitzer. There's no discussion. We'll move to a roll call. Mr. Menino?
Menino, I.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, I.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, I.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, I.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, I.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, I.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, I.
And McDonald, I. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, Amherst Media.